To find out what's happening. But like you say, he still want me to drink more water. And I understand that. No matter. Just that, you know, the more water I drink, the more I have to run.
These comments on the commission's initial draft redistricting map, as well as a second draft map the commission published this past Friday. Please note that the second map has not been endorsed by the commission, but a majority of the commission members felt was appropriate to publish the map for discussion and to receive comments from you, the public. Both draft maps are available for review and inspection on the county council's website and also on the redistricting commission's webpage. I will now read the rules of procedure for tonight's public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak should have registered online using the speaker registration form prior to the hearing. Each registered speaker will be permitted up to three minutes to speak. There will be a timer displayed so that speakers know how much time they have left for their testimony. Once the timer has expired, we would ask that you please conclude your remarks. We appreciate everyone's interest in this process and the desire to address the commission, but we want to ensure that each person has the ability to testify and be heard in an equal opportunity manner. In fairness to all speakers, we ask that you please comply with the three-minute timeline. Now, before we get to our speakers, I'd like to recognize three elected officials that are in the audience tonight. The first would be Senator Jackson. And then we have delegates Shalaga and Naraki. Did I miss any elected officials? Good. Now, our first speaker will be Delegate Shalaga.
Good evening. For the record, Delegate Kathy Shalaga, first and foremost, I want to thank all of you for your hard work and let you know that we do appreciate it and we know how hard it is. I've been in Annapolis for 14 years and I've been through three redistrictings, and it's always difficult. But we appreciate you taking time to come here, everybody across the county. That being said, I would like to let you know that I am in favor of map number one. I believe that when the citizens of Baltimore County were asked about redistricting, that is the map that they looked at. And I also believe that it most fairly keeps communities together. I'm speaking specifically for the east side over here where I represent. And the new district is largely in District 7A. That is the district I represent in Annapolis. And I also believe that that map will help reduce the chance of a lawsuit. I've been involved in two lawsuits against redistricting maps, and they are difficult. One, we prevailed in the courts throughout the map that the legislature drew in Annapolis. So, you know, looking at it from that perspective as well, I think it makes the most sense to go with map one. Thank you so much.
All right, our next speaker will be Delegate Naraki.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. For the record, I'm Delegate Ryan Naraki. I represent District 7A with Delegate Kathy Shalaga in Annapolis, which is largely much of what would be sort of this new east side district here. Look, I won't say what Delegate Shalaga says. I'll talk about some other points. We are both in favor of district or iteration number one. One, because it keeps communities together. Unfortunately, the east side of the county has been divided for a number of years among several council districts. This map would unify the east side of the county, would create a Middle River and Essex district, which, by the way, has a historic precedent. There was a council district before, for many iterations of council districts before, that were Middle River and Essex district. I think that's important to factor that in. I think that the waterfront communities that we represent also have very unique needs. And there's other iterations that are over here on the wall. If you look, iteration one presents basically two waterfront districts. There's another iteration here that divides that up into three waterfront districts. I think that we should be getting less waterfront districts because of the unique needs of those districts and not adding more waterfront districts. We, Delegate Shalaga and I, represent a community. It's off of Benji's Road. It's very close to here. Now, it's not on the water, but it's about a quarter to half a mile from the water by the way that the crow flies. Now, this community, and you're probably going to hear from some of the community members there, have had failing septic systems for a number of years. And the reason that they're failing is frankly because of their proximity to the water. It's very wet. In a different iteration, I believe that's the Woodlawn approach, whatever iteration that is, that puts that in a completely different district that frankly just has this little sliver of Middle River and then has all this other stuff that has nothing to do with waterfront areas. Now, I think having a council member that understands all of that, the totality of that, is important. It's been important for us to get a new sewer system in that area, to have one council member to work with. We got a lot of money from the state and we got money from the council because we had someone that understood those unique needs of these areas. The other thing that I'll point out is frankly, we represent a lot of communities that are underserved, and they've been underserved for a number of years. I think if you start parsing this up and having districts that have these long arms that come from other parts of the county, we're going to continue to have areas in Middle River that frankly continue to be underserved because you're going to have council members that aren't here potentially. They could be in a very different part of the county. That's why, for all those reasons, I think it's extremely important that we go with iteration one. As Delegate Shalaga said also, that is the map that most resembles what was essentially voted on by the voters when they passed the charter initiative this past year. So for those reasons, I think it's very important that we should go with that map, iteration one. Thank you again for your time and thank you for your work in this process.
Delegate Naraki, can I ask you a quick question? So on my way here, sully me, I got a little lost. I don't come over to this part of the county often. And I ended up on Philadelphia Road, which runs right between 40 and 95. And when I got here, I took a look at iteration one and I recognized that in that five-minute detour that I took, I would have drove through three different districts if we went with, if map iteration one was the one that went through. So my question is, that seems like a lot of fragmentation. And my question is, who represents Rossville? Who represents the areas of this community? Who historically in this area have been where all the district lines have converged? And that's what we're attempting to do. The commission has not endorsed this second map, but what this district does is it tries to bring together those districts that have been fragmented for decades in the maps that we've put forward. And so my question to you is again, who represents those areas? Because if you look at that iteration, three districts converge right there.
So if we're talking about the current council maps, if we're talking about Philadelphia Road right now, there's actually three council districts that are there now, right? So you wouldn't be changing that necessarily there with that. Depending upon how far you go down Philadelphia Road, Councilman Crandall does come in at a certain area, although that's below Rossville. So really kind of in that area that you're talking about in Rossville, you're really talking about like two. Councilman Ortega and Councilman Marks kind of come together in that area. Councilman Crandall is down further, below 695, down in that area. And really, he only has a small sliver of Rosedale, which is kind of the part that's more towards back river, kind of heading in that direction. So right now, still kind of two districts in that area. You know, and so I don't know that it would be radically different in either of those approaches with respect to that area.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Senator Jackson, you did not sign up, but do you care to offering testament? Okay, thank you, sir. Our next speaker then will be Gustavus McLeod.
My name is Gustavus McLeod. I'm the executive director of Glen L. Martin Museum, soon to be located at the Maryland Aerospace Heritage Center there at the old Lake Platte. It is good to be here tonight. Thank you, delegates, for showing up, Senator. And it's good to see all this great communication and this is democracy at work. So, but that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is, there is a duty for those who govern to do the right thing for the people who they govern. A community should have one voice. This represents the most historic aviation community on the planet. It has a voice. It was formed here to do a job. That community has something in common. People who have things in common should have a common voice. Number one plan does that. And it's your job to make sure that those people have one voice. That's better for everyone. It's better for the council. It's better for one councilman to represent one community than to try to make, to drive, to do this stretch of doing all these communities. And so if we can all speak, everybody has a voice at the table. This community, this historic community that's been here for 97 years asks to have one voice. And Plan Number One helps that voice. Thank you. I'll give the rest of my time off.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker will be Keith Dorsey.
Good evening. I also applaud the work of the commission and thank you for taking your time out. I know what it is in terms of having to, you know, sacrifice and come out to these kinds of events. So I too want to thank you. Good evening. My name is Keith Dorsey. I'm a resident of Owens Mills and served on the council structure review workroom. In addition, I'm a former director of the Baltimore County Office of Budget and Finance, where I worked for more than 35 years and gained an appreciation of the needs of all communities of Baltimore County. I'm also the author of the Woodlawn Approach to Council Redistricting. It is the only plan that truly begins and ends with trying to recognize those historic communities. It preserves the four major communities on the west side of the county, Catonsville, Woodlawn, Randalls Town, and Pikesville. Two of those communities, Woodlawn and Randalls Town, just happen to be two-thirds African-American. This plan does not separate Lutherville from Towson. And also, due to the expanded number of council districts, we can, for the first time, recognize the Parkville-Rosedale community that happens to be a majority-minority district. It maintains Dundalk as well as the Essex-Milroy River waterfront as combined with Kingsville and White Marsh. And of course, there's the North County. I will take my last moments to correct a few statements that have been made at previous sessions. One, the Woodlawn Approach does not consider Democratic versus Republican politics. It attempts to preserve, not separate, the Jewish community. I am known to be an even-tempered numbers guy and a former Woodmore or so Community Association leader, no more a crazy activist than those of you who came to this public meeting. I believe the supermajority African-American district not only offers the best chance of actually increasing the number of African-Americans on the council, but also are legally sustainable because they're based on historic community boundaries, not a contrived gerrymandering of precincts. Again, the Woodlawn Approach is, I believe, is a superior map in which minor changes can be made by the county council without destroying the basic premise. I ask the commission to recommend this map will close facsimile to the county council.
Our next speaker will be Ms. Linda Dorsey Walker.
Good evening, all. I want to address the audience, as well as the people on the commission. My name's Linda Dorsey Walker and I am the chair, or what's the chair, of Vote For More, the effort that actually led to all of this happening. Three and a half years ago, I attempted to do that which no one else had done in almost 70 years. I said, let's not just fix the seven districts we already have. I said that let's follow the recommendation that was made in 1978 by the Redistricting Commission, which said that we needed to expand this county by this year. We voted, the public voted overwhelmingly in November to expand by two. I had hoped it would be four, but it's two. Now let me talk about what's been proposed. The most recent iteration of the map that's been put out would divide the Catonsville community in half vertically. That's a non-starter. Over 300 people have now written in from the Catonsville and Woodlawn area to say they don't want that to happen. Why? Because as drawn, there would be four or five high schools located in Catonsville alone and only one high school, Milford Mill High School, located in Woodlawn. It would put all of the major resources and services in one district and almost nothing in Woodlawn. In the Towson area, I believe, as my brother said, that communities are supposed to be kept together. Catonsville, Woodlawn, Randalls Town slash Owens Mills, Pikesville, we went out of our way to make sure that the resources that we know that are frequently used by the folks in Pikesville stay in that area. But over in Towson, as the most recent version separates Timonium and Lutherville from Towson, that's just not something that can be done or should be done. Even the signage coming up the sideways says, go this way to Towson and go the other way to Timonium and Lutherville. Don't separate them. The people don't want to be separated. We need to put Parkville in that new district. Why? It has the largest concentration of minorities there. We must have minority representation. And anyone that says, anyone that says that the Justice Department does not improve a supermajority of a minority or a race in a district, doesn't do their homework. Because four years ago, I got established District 11A, at which the Justice Department ordered the state of Maryland to create because they said it was no longer fair for a majority of African-Americans to continue to only have options from one part of the district. So they ordered a 68% district be created. So before you go any further down the road thinking it's a violation of the Voting Rights Act, this was the second time that that size district was created. In 2001, when I was the architect of the fourth council manic district, and in 2022, when District 11A came about, the folks on the east side want and demand and need a voice. And for you to not face the reality of the change that's taken place here does a disservice to the work you've put in. You have to do the right thing because we're going to make it happen.
All right, our next speaker will be Mr. Jason Glenn.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for undertaking the grueling but vital task of redrawing Baltimore County's council manic districts and for providing this opportunity for public input. My name is Jason Glenn and I'm a Baltimore County resident of District 2 and a chairman of the Woodlawn Presidential Council. This council represents nine community associations and homeowners associations within the Lockhearn and Woodlawn neighborhoods. My position is that I support the Woodlawn approach. Speaking on behalf of our communities, I must express our disappointment with the maps presented by the commission thus far. While the second map iteration shows some improvement over the first, it still falls short of meeting the needs and expectations of the Woodlawn community. Specifically, we strongly disagree with the proposed southeastern boundary line for District 2 and Map 2. Leveraging the Interstate 695 as a definitive boundary, cutting off neighborhoods that extend from Liberty Road south through Baltimore National Pike is unacceptable. This proposal unnecessarily breaks up established Woodlawn neighborhoods that are currently part of District 2. We believe a more sensible southern boundary for District 2 would be Baltimore National Pike itself or even Route 70. Maintaining these existing neighborhood connections within District 2 is crucial for preserving community cohesion and ensuring effective representation. Therefore, we respectfully urge the commission to adopt the Woodlawn C map. This map better reflects the existing community boundaries and keeps our interconnected neighborhoods within the same district. Thank you for your time and your consideration of our concerns.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Joseph Moran.
Thank you, commission. I'm here to read an endorsement from the Perry Hall Improvement Association. Redistricting commission members, be advised that the Perry Hall Improvement Association, PHIA, at its May 8, 2025 meeting, voted to advise the redistricting commission that PHIA unanimously supports the commission's iteration one redistricting proposal and praised the commission for its diligent work. The motion from the PHIA reads as follows. The Perry Hall Improvement Association supports the Baltimore County Redistricting Commission's iteration one. Perry Hall Improvement Association also recommends that the commission extends the eastern boundary of the proposed seventh district to align with Route 40 Plaski Highway. This motion was passed unanimously. The motion was based on the following. Number one, the proposed District 7 boundaries closely coincide with the existing residential identity with the community of Perry Hall and Kingsville. Number two, the proposed District 7 boundaries show clear and concise boundaries that reflect little, if any, gerrymandering and represent what residents perceive as their community. Number three, the extension of Eastern Boulevard to Route 40 Plaski Highway would not affect any population as the area is largely commercial in nature. And number four, Perry Hall Improvement Association is aware of alternative proposals that significantly gerrymander the eastern side of Baltimore County. These alternatives do not enforce community cohesion or identity. Thank you for your time. That's, I want to submit this to you from the Perry Hall Improvement Association. But I'd also like to say personally, I've lived in the Perry Hall area since 1964. And we are celebrating our 250th anniversary this year. And what Mrs. Dorsey said about keeping communities and resources together, I'm with you 100%. And that's why I think Perry Hall needs to stay in District 7.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Sam Weaver.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sam Weaver. I was born and raised in Essex. I'm part of the Essex CDC, the Community Development Corporation. And we've worked with Middle River for years and years through the Marine Trades Association and the CDC. And I'd like to see it stay together. I'm in support of number one. I don't want to be working with two different council people for the same basic needs for the Essex area.
And our next speaker will be Ms. Karen Nguyen.
Hi, my name is Karen Nguyen. I currently live in District 7. I'm the executive director and co-founder of Maryland Waterways Foundation. So I understand the significance of the waterfront area in this, in this district or the districts and the importance of keeping it together. Unfortunately, there's people in Baltimore County that don't even know that there's waterfront in Baltimore County, let alone the needs. And it's very important to keep it cohesive together, keep Essex and Middle River together to see the needs and be able to reach the needs. So I support map number one and keeping the area cohesive. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker will be Mr. Shafik Hinn.
Good evening, commissioners. Again, just want to thank you guys for all your hard work, everything you've been doing to help move this county forward. But before I get into it, I did want to ask the community, when you voted to expand the council, did you see any of the maps? Okay, so very misleading by our delegates. So the last time I stood here in front of you, I asked a very simple question, right? I said, who do you serve? The people or the politicians that appointed you? Tonight, I want to thank you to those of you who answered that question with courage, Commissioner Bel Castro, and those who supported map two. You chose the harder path by doing the right thing. Because of your leadership, we now have the framework to move Baltimore County forward. But unfortunately, not everyone has shown that same commitment to the people. One commissioner has publicly stated that he would never support a six-to-three map under any circumstances. So I have to ask, is that based on facts, personal opinion, or political marching orders? Because when Councilman Marks posted online that this commission was pressured by certain activists to shift from map one to map two, he's not telling you the truth. See, the truth is dozens of residents, taxpayers, and voters from across the county spoke out. Not a handful of citizens, but everyday people who saw map one for what it was, a plan that dismissed the voices of diverse communities and defied the very spirit of the Voting Rights Act. The council should not be working to sway public opinion in a process that's meant to be led by the people. And yet, we continue to see Councilman David Marks dog whistle and spin a narrative rooted in division, not representation. Map one, map one would have effectively redlined Baltimore County. Take a look. It would have effectively redlined Baltimore County, packing Democrat and minority voters into the west, Republican voters into the east, a clear effort to crack, dilute, and silence diverse voices on the east side. Now, map two, if this is not the finish line, but it's the starting point and it's a far better place to be in, so thank you. So, community members, we're in pole position. Stay loud, stay engaged, and keep fighting. Commissioners, stay the course. Don't get distracted. You've heard the people. Between the ACLU map, the Woodlawn C map, and commission map two, we have the building blocks to create a map that lifts all voices and reflects the true face of Baltimore County. See, this is our moment to lead with courage, to choose fairness, and to show every resident that their voice matters. So let's finish the job together.
Our next speaker is Ms. Crystal Mercer.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Mercer. I'm with the Overly High School PTSA and I also sit on the South Perry Hall Improvement Association Board. And the reason why I'm here tonight is to represent what I see as a flag on the plaque. Reason being, not to diminish any of the work that you, the commission, have put forth and will continue to put forth. We applaud the work that you're doing. But what I see is Bill 4724, that map that brought us all here after the fact. That is concerning to me because at the end of the day, regardless of what map you come up with, we know it's going back to the council and they've already shown us what their true intent was. And I'm concerned that no matter how great of a map you produce with all of the community input and all of the efforts and the contributions that we're all here tonight sacrificing our time to give, will be, at the end of the day, if it's not acceptable to the council, it will be rejected. It could be modified, thrown out altogether because it does not meet their biased approach to how they want to run government. I am deeply concerned that this map preceded this commission. I thank you for answering the call and I hope that map two, the Woodlawn C approach, and map two, in my opinion, are the best options we have right now. I think we're moving closer. We demand a minority district in the east. We need it. It's only right, it's only fair, and thank you for hearing our call.
And our next speaker is Savannah Weber.
Good evening, you guys. Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm going to make it quick. Ms. Shalaga, when she stepped up, she said in order to prevent any type of lawsuits, that was something that she used as an example, what could happen. I'm currently being sued by one of the developers that's encouraging map two. And so I'm here in support of map one. I'm being sued using public funds. I have the proof in my purse, if you want to see it. So not being careful about how you do this could result in a lawsuit. Intentionally manipulating the map that was on our voting thing when we all went to go vote on November 6 is just seems like very intentional act of everything. So I'm just here to support number one. Thanks for having me.
Ms. Weber, can I ask you a quick question?
You can, but you can have it. You can, but you can have it.
Okay.
All right, our next speaker will be Mr. Mike Myers.
I took my name off the list.
Okay, thank you. And next up is Josh Sines, or Josh Sines, excuse me.
Josh Sines, thank you. So I took some time this weekend to look at this, this map. First, I should say I'm supporting Iteration 1. But the second one that you guys put out this weekend, I spent a lot of time this weekend really looking at that map, trying to figure out why those lines were drawn the way that they were drawn. And it occurred to me, at least in Middle River, you drew a line right around the growth area, the area that we'd been fighting development in, and you drew every community out of it that's been pushing back on that development. It's pretty obvious if you start looking at it all. Ms. Bel Castro, I'd like to know why in your confirmation hearing, you didn't tell everyone that you have an open campaign account, active. I'd like to know if you've taken money while you've sat on this commission. Earlier today, I filed an ethics complaint against you and turned it in to the inspector general, let them straighten it out. But I'd also like to ask you, I've heard you a lot the past few months, talk about how we need fair representation and equity, right? I can agree with that. Would you like to explain the triangle hanging out of the 4th district? Why it keeps showing up on every map hanging out of that 4th district? It's your house, and you have been consistently gerrymandering your own house into the Pikeville district. Are you running for that seat? Why don't you tell everybody right now?
So I've said multiple times, I am not running for the Baltimore County Council.
Are you running in 26?
No, I'm not.
You're not running for any seat in 26?
I'm not running in 26.
Why do you have an active campaign account?
We just haven't closed it.
So I guess we could all wait till January to see if you've taken any money yet or not?
I haven't taken any money.
Thank you.
Try to be a little more respectful.
Yes, sir.
I am going to address some of this, though, because he has very much defamed me and my character in this very moment. I've heard two speakers now talk about developers. No developers were ever consulted in the drafting of this map.
In all fairness, you have 1,000 acres on the east side of the 7th district.
Excuse me, ma'am, we heard you.
This is still my time, look at it. Yeah. Five houses in 1,000 acres. Explain that to me. Explain why those five houses in 1,000 acres needs to be there.
I have...
Pick up that poster and show what I'm talking about.
So again, sir, this was a starting point. Starting, we heard from the public that they would like a BIPOC district on the east side. Also, when you look at the maps, you can see for decades, individuals have been underrepresented because all the lines have converged in this one area. You can see that area when you look at the draft map and you look at previous maps. If you have concerns about specific areas, I'm willing, and all my commissioners here know that, that we are ready and willing to make tweaks. Excuse me, no, no, it is my turn now. It is my turn now.
Well, folks, let's come to order.
No, you can come to argue.
But I will tell you this, I'd love to know why a west side commissioner is splitting up the east side of the county. You know exactly what I'm talking about. You're gerrymandering up this map, and we all know it.
Mr. Sines, please sit down.
The final point that I will make, I'm sorry, Eric, because there were a couple more things that I was defamed on that are inaccurate. I do have an open campaign account. No money has gone into that campaign account in years. No money will reflect on the next report coming in because I am not running in 26, and I've said that multiple times. And that's that. I do ask, moving forward, that we keep this respectful. This entire commission, regardless of our viewpoints on how we move forward, has been working really hard to try and get this right. And anytime we put a draft map forward, it is just that, a draft. And so we're here to engage with you, to hear how we make maps better, how we make ideas better, because none of us at this table are experts in anyone's community. And so, Mr. Sines, I don't want to have you come back up, but if you have a specific concern, that looks like something that's very much amenable in this map, what you've brought forward. And so that's why we're here, to figure out what the tweaks are, to figure out where, what your views are, and how we move forward. So I'll leave it at that, but I hope that we can move forward respectfully because what just happened is egregious.
I want to present some ground rules going forward. I encourage everybody to speak their mind, but I do not encourage anyone to make it personal, as we've had that go on in the last couple minutes. We're here tonight to talk about maps. I'm 100% fine with you trashing one, two, or three maps. I'm 0% fine with you trashing individuals of this commission, or other speakers for that matter. There's no place for that kind of action here. With that, let's go ahead, and the next speaker would be, and excuse me if I pronounce your first name incorrectly, but Rosita Gray. Forgive me, ma'am, for mispronouncing your name.
Hello, everybody. My name is Rosita Gray. I'm the 66th representative for the Central Democratic Party. Also, I am a Middle River resident who lives on the water. Also, I have a business in Middle River. Also, I attend church in Middle River, which I'm, I'm the children's minister for Victoria's Living Faith. And with that being said, I'm here to stand for the kids. Because all of this division that I see is going to be happening in my area, is going to affect the next generation and our kids. And I don't want that happening to them. So I'm going with Woodlawn C because what I can see is my, my people will have a voice. My people will have a voice, and I don't want us losing our voice. And the way I see with all of these maps out here, there will be division, and you all won't have a voice. And that's what I'm here to stand up to make sure we in Middle River, Essex, and Roseville, everybody that I represent in District 6 has a voice. And the one that I can see that we can all have a voice at is the Woodlawn C. And, because I see where that's equal and it's still allowed.
Our next speaker will be Ms. Peter Richus.
Thank you very much. And thank you, as others have expressed, for your diligence and your hard work, much more than I know you bargained for. For the record, my name is Peter Richus. I've lived in Baltimore County for over 20 years. Redistricting must reflect both population data and demographic reality. Baltimore County is 48% minority, with over 30% of residents identifying as black. This forms a butterfly pattern of diversity across both the east and the west sides of the county. Both sides deserve meaningful representation. That's why I was deeply disappointed also to hear one commissioner say he would not support, would not support any map that didn't produce four Republican and five Democratic Given that registered Democrats outnumber Republicans by more than 2 to 1, that position seems disconnected from the facts and inconsistent with a fair and transparent process. This commission is not here to represent political parties, and I respectfully suggest that partisan gerrymandering be left to the politicians. A 3-1-5 map, that is, three majority black districts, one majority BIPOC or opportunity district, and five majority white districts, comes closest to aligning with the county's population. It's fair, it's lawful. No map can guarantee outcomes, but it must certainly ensure opportunity. The commission's first map missed the mark, but that's what drafts and public participation are for. Iteration 2 improved on the draft map by adding a BIPOC opportunity district on the east side, a meaningful step. And thank you, Commissioner Bel Castro, for stepping forward on that. Plan C of the Woodlawn map is, is an addition of a BIPOC district on the east side. However, it still underrepresents black voters by 25% and underrepresents other minorities by nearly 40%, while overrepresenting white voters by 30%. Commission Iteration 2, a 2-2-5 map, distributes black voting strength more equitably and improves representation across communities. A 3-1-5 configuration remains most proportional and VRA compliant. It brings black representation to over 33%, a fair reflection of our population versus just 22% under the current proposals. Please make refinements needed to give the council a map that reflects all of Baltimore County and gives every resident a voice.
Our next speaker will be Ms. Muriel Gray.
I would like to say good evening to everyone, and to God be the glory. I'm from Turner Station. I've been there since I was seven years old. And Turner Station at one time was a total community where you didn't have to go out of Turner Station for anything. And now it has changed. And as a result of the changes in everything in life, we're having some very, very serious difficulties. One of them is housing. And I understand that we did get $10,000 for, to revend some of their houses. We also, but that's not enough money to do anything with, really. We also have people being sent out in Day Village and Ernest Line, but Day Village is the most, one that's in jeopardy right now. In February, they sent out 15 people. In March, they sent out 16 people. In April, they sent out 14 people. I represent St. Matthew's United Methodist Church. I am the Ministry of Kindness chairperson, where I do go out and help people to get monies for helping with rent and evictions. And as a result, with the rent being so high now, you need three or four people in the house working to pay the rent. And I'm asking you all to look into that also. We are a community, a tightly committed community. We have our Fleming senior senators there, and we need help there with certain things that we, other things that we need, and we're not getting them. Right now, we need some new tables and chairs in there for the seniors to come and enjoy. We got some roller chairs, and we are so afraid someone's going to fall on those. It's a lot of things that need to be changed and done in Turner Station. And we need, also, I didn't get a chance to look at the charts over there, but I understand what they were saying about the charts. And number two, if it's more feasible for Turner Station and Baltimore County, and I am from District 7, we need to look at it very, very carefully because we need to bind together. We don't need to be separate. And I thank you for listening, and to God be the glory.
Our next speaker is Patricia Payne.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Payne. I represent the, can't hear me. I represent the Middle River on the Benji's Road and Gladway Road area. I grew up there. My family has owned that property from the 30s. And I'm a little, it's been hard to get the help that we need, but with Kathy Salegi and Ms. Maraki was able to get the help that we needed with the sewage system. We do not want to be separated and be another part of separation. We grew up with the separation. They put us, at school, we had to go to, passed two high schools to go to another high school that was out of the area that we grew up with. What we need now is for us to remain. So I support Iteration 1. That's where we are, and we want to remain that way. You have a lot of senior citizens that cannot get out, so you put us in an area that we're not represented. I won't know anybody, and yeah, you can get to know folk, but we are still working to get what we needed that was, was supposed to get back in the 70s. So here we are once again. We're going to be pushed somewhere else, and that's what they continue to do. So we want to remain where we are, right where we are. We don't want to be separated and put somewhere else. This is not fair to the community all over again. We're going through this again. So the, the systems here, we're now that we're on the 43 line, that, that makes this separation more advantageous. But no one from here but the representatives that we have been accustomed to really have not come out and find, and to find out what in the world is needed, why we need what we need, and how to, how to move forward. That's all we can do at this point, is to move forward. But we don't want to be separated in order to be, in order to be moved, to move, excuse me, forward. So I hope that y'all take that into consideration. Iteration 1 is best for us. We've been there for over 100 years plus. And then to have it all separated for a senior community, and they're still not represented. So this is what we're asking for, that you stick with the map that we are asking you to do, and to go forward positively as you can.
The next speaker is Chris Burnett.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Christopher Paul Burnett, and I stand not as a mapmaker. That's y'all's job. My job as a pastor is to speak for people. And as we come to this moment, all I know is for the last eight years, when I've tried to speak, when I've tried to make a point, we've been told that we're in the minority. And that then means that whatever we're crying out for doesn't happen. And so when we say we want to keep things the same, it bothers me that when I suggest there's an issue for people that look like me, we're told we're in the minority. And I don't get to shout, I really don't get to yell, or I'm this angry... And I don't get to shout, I really don't get to yell, or I'm this angry black man that nobody then listens to. But when we talk about representation, it's more than just having faces that look like us. Representation means that we have people that think and care and desire to see that we're whole, just like everybody else. And so if we don't have representation that thinks and cares and hears us, not just as minorities that we need a handout, but as real people that are part of these districts, then there's no reason for us to even go through this iteration of what we're doing because we'll never have a voice. And all we're asking for is representation so that when we do cry out, that we at least have half a chance of being heard. And so when we start saying we need representation from a district standpoint of minority, it's not because we want to break up things. I'm hearing about school districts. School districts have nothing to do with this map. We're talking about representation of people, and we need somebody that will hear us and actually do something about it. And that's why we're asking that when we go to vote, that somebody will hear us, that when we go to vote, that when our vote is cast, that it's not diluted so that we still are not heard. And so at this point, all we're asking you all to do, because everybody sitting out here can't do anything, it's on y'all, so we're raising our voice for you all to take it back and help us to know that we are indeed going to have representation. All the ideas that are being presented are doing. Last thing I want to say, it's very interesting that these people that came and said what they said, said what they said and left. And that's what we're left with, people who say what they say and leave. And we're still left here trying to figure out how do we do what we need to do with no representation. And so, Commissioner, what I'm asking you all to do is to make sure Map One isn't something we voted on. We were given that. And so when we went to vote, it looks like we voted on it, but we weren't ever able to see that map. Now that we have, we're crying out that that's not gonna work. And so I need you all to make sure that one is definitely not the case, but that there's some more consideration of what it looks like to have fair representation.
Our next speaker is Ms. Sharonda Huffman.
Good evening. Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Sharonda Huffman, and I live in Essex, and I'm running for office. And there's other people who say they're not running for office, but they are. Okay, so in particular, sometimes somebody says something, don't believe everything is true. I live in Middlesex. I do not live in a community that's on the water, okay? There are, how many people in here identify as a minority? Can you raise your hand? Okay. So if everybody thinks that it's okay for us to have a society in which black people and brown people cannot be represented, the world has changed. There literally was a Supreme Court ruling, and it was reaffirmed just last week. So everybody that says, oh, I know about court, I work in the law department, I study this, okay? So what has happened is you have a society that doesn't want to change. I know people, you said you lived in Turner Station. Why do you live in Turner Station? Because of segregation. And all we're doing today is we are just manipulating the numbers to continue segregation. So it's one person that came out here, because some of you might not even know how to use the maps. I don't know what your qualifications are, but I appreciate the effort. So when Lisa Bel Castro tried to listen to the people who said something, we have a councilperson who comes and says, oh, we're just activists. No, we're black people. No, we are people who live here, and we are demanding to have representation. So I love the Essex PDC, but I want you to go look at the website and look who is actually on the board. Okay, so the next thing, if you want to have the Essex CDC together, it's literally just a little blip that you can make to put them together, because I had made that mention of it. Okay, so now today, I need you to go back, either turn in the map number two, or let them figure it out, but today, we cannot continue to say, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do. If you don't know what to do, just listen to Lisa, because maybe y'all all tired. But we can't continue to keep on saying, oh, well, I got to listen to this person. Let me just tell you the truth. The truth is, you can't over-populate people in one area. We, how many people know about Juneteenth? Let me tell you, you're free. We can actually vote together. So why do you want to have two districts on the west side instead of three? Okay? That doesn't make any sense to me. Okay? You can actually win. Look at the statistics. I have given you actual law, and you can see the statistics. Sometimes laypeople want to say things, but this is what, you don't want to get sued. I mean, whatever the council does, that's what they do. But can you be on the right side of history?
Our next speaker is Pat Hook.
Hi, good evening. I'm Pat Hook, a Middle River resident for the past 35 years. I appreciate the opportunity to address you guys today and asking that you maintain the boundaries of a council District Eight as drawn in Bill 4724 or Map One. Essentially because of the division that's been going on for far too long, we suffer from fragmented representation. Right now, Middle River is split among three different council districts, and this division has diluted the voices of residents and made it difficult for our community to address our unique concerns effectively. Map One offers a much-needed solution by uniting Middle River and Essex and ensuring a coherent and focused representation. By keeping Middle River and Essex together, the map allows us to speak with one strong voice. Splitting Middle River and Essex only across multiple districts only hinders our ability to advocate for policies that directly address our needs. Our waterfront areas face specific challenges such as coastal erosion, flooding, and water quality concerns, and a consolidated district allows for more coordinated efforts in environmental protections and infrastructure improvements that benefit all our residents. So I mean, Map One not only rectifies the issue of Middle River's division among three council districts, but also ensures our unique waterfront interests are recognized and effectively advocated for the county level. So I respectfully urge the commission to preserve the District Eight boundaries set forth in Map Number One.
Our next speaker is Ms. Crystal Francis.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I want to just thank the community for coming out. You guys and gals have showed up tonight in large numbers, which speaks volumes, because changing maps is so important. And as many of the residents and policy experts and professionals and voters and constituents who have come to this mic have said they are not happy with Map One, they are not happy with Map Two. Now, we can see that there was some change that tried to take in consideration some of the comments that were left, so we're getting there. But as was stated, it's just a draft. I think the challenge is oftentimes we're not involving community at the beginning, but community members and constituents and voters are given a product that we didn't have an opportunity to give a voice to before the process began. So my recommendation, because we've heard from many people about what they want, some people favor the Middle River Essex put together in Map One, but it's not good for the Woodlawn side. So what I think needs to happen, in all fairness, is an opportunity for each, before you go back to drawing Iteration Number Three, and I hope this request can be honored, that when the commission does do this in transparency, when you're dividing up the maps and going back to figure out how we can fix, you know, District Eight, Perry Hall, Kingsville, Middle River, the Woodlawn side, can there be a live feed so we can understand what ideology and decisions are going into, why these, how these boundary lines are being drawn? Because we came here, what, we were online, we've been testifying at every hearing, whether it be in person or in writing, and we're still not getting the product, the community is not getting the product that they're asking for. And I believe that with all the comments being made here today, all the data that has been shared online from the public, we have experts, many people on the commission said that they are not map experts, but we have map experts sitting out here in this, in this side of the aisle. If we can really start taking District Eight, bringing in community, and hashing out, okay, this is a decision that we are going to make, and this is why we're changing that boundary line. Because I think that's where the challenge started. The public and the community and the voters and the constituents are not being involved at the very beginning. So I don't think Map One is sufficient. We know Map Two is not sufficient either. Let's bring the community together, kind of like a hackathon, where we're working through each segment before you do that very third map to make sure that every comment was addressed.
Ladies and gentlemen, I just want to say before we continue on is that the number one thing that we try to do and that we are continuing to do is to maintain these communities as much as, as much as we can together. But the number one thing we have to look at is population. We were given a task that was trying to make sure that the population of each district was nearly the same or the same. So with, with what's going with 95, 95,000 per district, you can understand why it seems like we're drawing a line through your community, through my community, or whatever. But it's, you gotta remember, the task that we were given, just as I said before, when that first map went out, I didn't see it either. So I'm telling you, I'm just like, just like you, I'm a citizen of this county, and I feel as though that we need to just, as you say, unite, stay together as community, bring forth your issues, but understand where we're coming from. Population must coincide. We can have 10% on one side, 10% on the other side, but we must try to maintain that goal of 95,000 people in each one of the districts.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Our next speaker will be Tamara Gunter.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tamara Gunter. I'm the advisory board president for the Greenlee Community, little part they edged out and made its own little community. I'm kind of saddened tonight, and I'm saddened because I see a lot of divide even in this room. You might not think so, but I see divide in this room. When certain people came to the mic, you stood because it was for you, right? When other people said what you wanted to hear, you clapped. It's sickening and it's sad. It's a divide. I disagree with Map One and definitely disagree with Map Two. But we have to talk about it and not be so divided. You guys in this room are so divided. And again, it's horrible, you know? We all go through stuff, we all have stuff, agenda we're trying to get through. I think that Essex and Middle River should be together. You know, but I also understand that there's no win-win in this situation. No one is going to be happy, one side or another, how this turns out. So I would like to take the time for everybody to reflect and say that you come here and you're just so divided, and somehow you have to try to get together for a common goal. We're not going to be happy whatever the decision is. So let's try to make it work as far as the community, as far as making sure there is no divide. But right now, you said you don't want division, and your, last time I checked, I look in the mirror, I'm African-American, last time I checked, I'm definitely a proud Democrat, but I see so much divide amongst my black people in this room and my Democrats. And it's a problem for me, because we should all be standing together, whether you're Democrat, Republican, white, or black. So I just want each one of you to take the time to reflect and say, no one's going to be happy. And thank you to the commission. I'm the advisory board president. It's hard, right? I got people knocking on my door. Not a good thing. So I know it's hard, and you have a hard task, okay? But I would like to take this time to say, please, stop the divide, you're doing it right here, right now.
Our next speaker is Dana Vickers Shelly. Let's, I call the meeting to order, and the next speaker is Dana Vickers Shelly.
Hello, Commissioners, good evening. I'm Dana Vickers Shelly, 20-year Baltimore County homeowner and the executive director of the ACLU of Maryland. Thank you so much for letting us be here tonight. We are urging the commission to use the powerful tool of redistricting to make sure that indigenous, black, Latin, Asian, and other residents of color can access equal opportunity and realize our voting power that is protected by the U.S. Constitution. Fair district maps in this county are long overdue. Without fair maps, we don't have a true democracy. And without a true democracy, we have a government that serves only some community's interests and not more, not all. Whether we've lived here since 1956, when the last maps were looked at, or 2016, our neighbors are counting on your leadership and your expertise throughout this process to lead to a Baltimore County council whose membership finally, finally accurately reflects and represents this entire community. We know Baltimore County can do better. To make sure that representation is aligned with the Voting Rights Act and beyond that, fair maps is the right thing to do for our neighbors and for ongoing vitality in Baltimore County. 48% of the county's population is BIPOC, 30% of the county is black. A map that creates three majority-black districts on the west side, one majority-BIPOC district on the east side, and five majority-white districts most accurately reflects the county's population. Packing black voters into two districts on the west side dilutes the power of black voters by over-concentrating them in fewer districts. The Voting Rights Act requires that districts be drawn in a way that provides black and BIPOC residents an equal opportunity. And I say residents, not voters, because this is what it is about, being represented. We want to be sure that people can vote for the candidates of their choice. We look forward to your support of democracy in Baltimore County.
Our next speaker is Catherine Allen.
Good evening. You've already heard from the Perry Hall Improvement Association regarding their support of Map One. I came to the virtual hearing and spoke to you then about the lines on Map One, and I am with the White Marsh Cowington Improvement Association. Our question for you, our hope is that Section 11-004 would be included with the Perry Hall Kingsville if you went with Map One or with any future versions that you might make. I know some people say that school is not important, however, it is. The children in that neighborhood all go to Chapel Hill Elementary School, which feeds into the Perry Hall middle and high school systems. It is important to us that we are aligning our interests. Our police force goes over to Route 40. Everything that that little corridor on Route Seven... Everything that that little corridor on Route 7 does goes along with the Perry Hall and Kingsville. It's a rural area, we always have the same kind of agenda. We are fighting for the same things. We certainly support our friends in Middlesex, Middle River, Essex, Dundalk, the water communities, but our properties don't really align with that portion of the fight. We don't, our needs are really along that Perry Hall corridor, and we would just like to be kept with that so that we aren't split off again. So really, that is, that is our big concern, is that one corridor in Rep. One or any further ones that you might make.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tony Forno.
Hello, my name is Tony Forno, just here to, you know, thank you for all you guys are doing. Also, I mainly support MAP One, but I also would like to ask that you include Planning Area 11004 in with Perry Hall and Kingsville. I've been there for almost 20 years. My kids have been going to school with, you know, people in Perry Hall and Kingsville, and like Kathy was saying, you know, we're, we're a community, we do a lot together, and I think that using Route 40 just makes more sense. You know, I understand the need to balance out based on population, but hopefully, you know, I don't think it's that many people there, so hopefully, making, you know, keeping that line consistent with Route 40, so it aligns with our communities, with our police force, with our schools, you know, hopefully that won't, that shouldn't screw the numbers that, that much. And hopefully, that would be more important, to have communities together rather than keeping, you know, an exact balance. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mark Hough.
Thank you, Commissioners, for being in attendance, for allowing me to speak tonight. I am Mark Hough. I am President of the White Marsh Perry Hall Calhounton, I'm sorry, White Marsh Calhounton Improvement Association. I'd like to say first, this is, this is, you know, an emotional thing, when we talk about drawing communities, when we talk about representation of different peoples and races and things like that. As, as we can see, it's emotional, there's a lot in this, right? I think for everyone, regardless of what your political affiliation is. And I, you know, my heart goes out to Ms. Gunter. I think that, you know, her approach, for all of us, I think that we could all learn something from her one minute of speaking tonight, is that I think if we took that approach where we work together and sat down together, I think that we can make this work a lot easier. Just, just my opinion. Anyway, at our last meeting on May 7th, our community voted, our community association voted unanimously to support Iteration One, provided that the Commission added the area north of Ebenezer Road between I-95 and Route 40. We also unanimously rejected Iteration Two for a few reasons, and let me explain. Our community, the communities of White Marsh and Calhounton, have long shared close bonds with the communities of Perry Hall and Kingsville. And I know this isn't about schools, it isn't about certain things, but it kind of is. Our children do go to the same schools, they share the same parks, our families use the same roads every day for driving, we go to the same local restaurants, we eat at the same places, we shop in the same grocery stores. These shared uses of these businesses and infrastructures need alignment with our representatives. You know, it just makes sense. My ask is, is simple, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward, and that is to keep the White Marsh and Calhoun, and Calhoun communities aligned and with their sister communities in Kingsville and Perry Hall as they should be. And one last thing, and the spirit of fairness, only because he was attacked and he's not here to defend himself, let me tell you the group here about Councilman Marks. Him and his beautiful wife just had a baby brought into their lives. He has worked side by side with us in our community, picking up trash not only along Route 7, but also over in the Seven Courts community. He's fought to bring new schools to our community for all children, for all children, he's done that. He has fought development and developers from creating horrible sprawl in our communities. He got us a medic, he got us a medic so that my 95-year-old mother-in-law had a chance to live, because she almost died three times waiting for the Kingsville medic to get to our home because the White Marsh medic was out on call. I just wanted to tell everybody, I get it, I do get it, it's politics, right? I do get it, but David Marks is also that guy too. That's all I wanted to say, okay? God bless you all.
Our next speaker is Danita Tolson. Done once, done twice. Okay, we'll move on to Donald James.
Good evening, Commissioners and, and Friends. I'm here to represent the Turner Station community. I serve as the pastor of the Friendship Baptist Church of Turner Station. I'm also a member of the Meadows Community Development Corporation and a group known as Turner Station Partners. I'm also a former member of the Turner Station Conservation Teams, and I've also served as the President of the Fleming Senior Center. However, through our Turner Station Partners Group, I'm here because we're interested in the redistricting that's going on in Baltimore County, and we support the Woodlawn Approach C. However, we are looking for representation that reflects our community, and Turner Station is a majority-minority community. Thank you so much. Have a blessed day.
Yes, thank you for, for having me speak. My name's Jerry Withers. I've been a resident of Baltimore County since 1956. I live in Kingsville. Let me just give you a little background of how this came about. The redistricting was the result of Question A Charter Amendment to increase the County Council to nine members, which passed on the 2024 election, November 5th. I did not vote for this amendment, because most people in this room do not understand that it greatly increases the fixed cost of running Baltimore County government. Plus, on top of that, the councilmen are getting large raises plus other perks. So that leads us to where we are tonight, to the proposals, number one and number two. The first map has compact boundaries that unify, that unifies the east side communities. This map was passed unanimously by the Commission. Then, under pressure from certain activists, the Commission drew up a second map that splinters the east side. It moves Middle River into a council district with Parkville and Rosedale. Alternate One, the first map, in my opinion, is the best proposal. Everyone should write email and text other county councilmen to tell them to support Proposal Number One. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Withers, but just for the record, the Commission voted on Iteration One to approve it for public comment. We did not vote on it to approve it as a final map. And I think that distinction is very important. Okay, the next speaker, the penultimate speaker, is Jim Hock.
I've heard so much change in this tonight, that the maps are becoming very confusing. Everybody's got their wants and their needs, and I think the one lady there said it best, that we need to get together, look at it, how can we make it work? Not fight each other on it. And then it's still going in front of a group of council people to make the final decision. Tell you the truth, I came in here, one map, I'm not sure now. It's been back and forth, and the reasoning, it's just, it's crazy. I mean, the fight for, you know, I don't want to see neighborhoods splintered up, definitely. I don't think anybody wants that. But the other part of that is, each individual neighborhood has its own character. Trying to keep those together is very important. There's got to be some type of balance, but again, I think you hit the nail on the head when you said, "We have to respect each other and try to do a better job." So thank you, and thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Hock. And our last speaker of the evening is Doug Selmer.
Good evening, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much for volunteering your time in a difficult process. My name is Douglas Selmer. I'm the current President of the Back River Neck Peninsula Community Association. In 1984, the state legislature started to create the Critical Areas Act, making coastal critical areas for restoring the bay. Hasn't done too good a job, but that's what it's there for. As much as possible, the critical bay areas should be as one, in one district as much as possible, because they're unique, and they were voted on the legislature to be that unique. So as much as possible, keep the critical area together so we can move the bay forward. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the speakers and all the others in attendance this evening. Also want to thank my fellow Commissioners for their attention to everything we heard tonight. We certainly have a lot to digest in the coming weeks. I'm ready to entertain a motion to adjourn. Please, someone, make that move.
Before we make the motion to adjourn, again, as a Commissioner, I want to thank everyone that came out tonight, and believe me, those of you who watched, watched this podium here or this table, you noticed that I've written down quite a bit. I mean, I'm a person that listens. I'm not a person that jumps out in a whole lot of action. I like to hear what people have to say. But with that man saying, I make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Suck it. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to thank everyone again and wish you a good night and a safe drive home.